I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission this Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P. M. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Nishinabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over two hundred years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Nishinabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Bush is absent. Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Here.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Osager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, since we have a quorum, we're going to move forward with the presentations and proclamations, and our presentation tonight is with Downtown Development Director Michelle Sponseller.
Good evening. Well, I'm here to give you a short and sweet update on Town Center, which is both a combination of additional civic space and the reconstruction of Parking Lot Three. So, we're going to be reconstructing Parking Lot Three and to transform the space into a vibrant multifunctional area with a goal to extend year-round activities and promote community engagement while retaining convenient parking, key on convenient parking and more of. We know the purpose, we know the goal, so let's talk about how we do this. We're going to start by taking the existing parking lot in Moser Street as seen here, from this to this through the following ways. So, some of the key elements. First and foremost, the parking lot reconstruction. Move the parking lot westward over Moser Street, currently acting as a bypass of downtown, and bring back on-street parking surrounding the area for a total increase of eighteen parking spaces. We're going to create a hub for community gatherings by increasing the green space by almost five times, providing a space for small gatherings and large events. We're going to be adding in public restrooms, which we currently do not have downtown. We're going to increase and improve the urban canopy. We're going to remove fifty old, some of them diseased trees, and we're going to be replanting fifty-seven. We're going to provide a space with universal accessibility for all ages and abilities by removing the curbs, adding in wider sidewalks and seating areas with ADA accessibility. We're going to add in sustainability and safety features such as E.V. chargers, water filling stations, L.E.D. lights, all while increasing the emergency access to Riverview Apartments. Next, let's talk about the project timeline. This is it moving forward. Grant administration, we're going to start that in December. We're hoping to have the grant agreement to you in the December eleventh meeting. We're going to be sending out the project for bid, fingers crossed, in December, with a review and award in late February. Begin construction in May, of course, depending on how Mother Nature is for us, and we're looking at a project complete date by end of September.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-four, to be clear, twenty twenty-four. Let's talk about the funding. Estimated cost, of course, going back, we talked about this earlier this year, but just as a reminder, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand for the base parking lot, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight sixty dollars to remove Moser Street bypass, add additional green space, the electrical upgrades, and one E.V. charger station. Grant-funded amenities to the amount of one-million-one-hundred-and-forty-and-four-hundred dollars, boy, such as the on-street parking spaces, universally accessible sidewalks, seating areas, two additional chargers, pedestrian lighting, and public restrooms. Total estimated project, two-million-two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. Now, let's talk about some of the funding that we've been able to confirm so far. We have one million from the M.B.D.C. Revitalization and Placemaking Grant, otherwise known as R.A.P., one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-five-hundred offset by the City Commission and the recent approval for E.V. chargers with E.V. Holdings, fifty thousand in grant funds from the Mount Pleasant Area Convention Visitors Bureau Destination Development Grant. ARPA funds committed by the City Commission was one-million-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars, used as a match for the R.A.P. grant. So, total funding secured, two-million-three-hundred-and-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars. However, we're not done. Staff is still working on other grants that can assist with the project cost, just touching base on some of these. We've applied for a fifty-thousand-dollar D.N.R. Urban and Community Forest Grant with a war notification, that is, at the end of November. Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe two-percent grant application in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars, also with a war notification at the end of November. And coming up this spring, a request for the Mount Pleasant Area Community Foundation in the amount of thirty-thousand dollars with notification the end of May, and staff is going to continue to look for other grants. Some of the related items. Parks Department is working with the VFW, American Legion, and Forgotten Eagle Organizations to move the memorials at the north section of Island Park adjacent to the Vietnam Memorial. We're going to be relocating the flagpole into the roundabout. We're going to communicate with all of you out in the audience, the City Commission, with this presentation and more. An email will be sent to our downtown contact list with a link to this presentation with an invitation to meet with one or all staff working on the project in case they have questions. And, of course, over the upcoming months, we'll also have communication on the construction kickoff, parking, where to park, how to park, things like that. I-Ride, where the pickup and drop-off is going to be in case there are temporary closures, deliveries, temporary road closures, and so on. And, of course, later in tonight's agenda, we're going to be reviewing staff's proposal for Broadway Central. So, at this time, I would like to you to know that there's a number of staff here in case you do have questions. Engineering staff is here, architect for the restroom, electrical, parks director, and myself, in case you have any questions.
Commissioner Ake?
So, first of all, I want to applaud you for this. I really just like this, if you look at the picture. Looks, it looks wonderful. So, you know, we get it done, we should apply for some kind of excellence award, you know? All right, that said, bathrooms?
Yes.
One or two or three? How many?
There'll be men's and there'll be women, I believe, I'm just gonna see, I believe there are at least three stalls in each.
Okay.
There's five in the women's.
There you go, five in the women's.
Okay. Yeah, because you know what happens with women's bathroom all the time, so.
There tends to be lines during events, yes, I am very familiar.
We want to make sure people are accommodated, and I'm going to assume that the bathrooms, we will also have bathrooms that, you know, meet ADA accommodations, you know?
Yes.
Standards of compliance, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. Okay, and you indicated that the completion deadline you projected is September?
End of September, correct.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so, just, 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 let's say there's hiccup. What's your, yeah, hiccup.
Oh, hiccups can happen. The reason why I can't give an answer to that is because that would depend on the hiccup. It depends. A hiccup of, oh, we found an old abandoned water line is entirely different than, I'm trying to think of something.
Tsunami.
Yeah, tsunami, I'm not sure we'd have that, but, yeah, something catastrophic, I don't know. But with our engineering team and the firm that we will select, those sort of contingencies we'll be looking at, I mean, short of a, I suppose, a tornado happening that we can't really plan for. There's contingencies that we put in place, so those timelines, we would hope that it would be done faster, but we always say, this is, I'm not gonna call it a worst-case scenario, but we like to push it out a little bit, and then if there's weather that happens, for example, when you go to work on the base or you're working on the pavement and it's pouring rain for a couple of weeks, well, we've got to push the timeline out, things like that.
Okay, so besides those, you know, natural problems, you know, weather and natural, you know, climatic problems, what kinds of, you know, what potential kind of challenge might you anticipate? I do this anticipatory thing because.
There's always challenges when you do a downtown project, always. There are always surprises underneath asphalt. Someone assumes something has been removed and we go, we start digging up and it's, oh, surprise, there's an old abandoned water line. We've done that a couple of times now, we've found things like that. But in this particular case, I know the engineering did soil borings, so they are a little bit more prepared for what we're going to find underneath the asphalt, especially in the parking lot, for example. And Moser Street, because that bypass was put in in the sixties, we have a little bit better record-keeping as opposed to some areas of downtown.
Okay, last question. Communication. You mentioned communication, you know, that you put information on the website, and how, okay, let's, there are some people who don't necessarily go to the website.
Correct.
So, what other avenues would you use or, you know, to communicate to people, update the community, and how frequently do you plan to do that?
Well, okay, so, different ways for different audiences. Let's take downtown for an example. We have an email list with business and property owners and their staff. I would imagine we're going to be updating them, I'm going to say, every two to three weeks. It could be more, depending on if there's a temporary road closure or things like that. For the general public, there's always the social media challenge or challenge, choices that we have, and then the website as well. I would say the website would be farther down on the list. If you want a little faster communication, social media is likely the way to go along with the targeted email list. Or telephone. Look, it's been, it's been a while since we've done a project of this scope downtown. More than likely, it's going to be me going door-to-door, especially if something comes up at the last minute. That's really what we have found it works best, then no one gets missed.
Well, that's a good idea because, you know, the one thing I don't want is people telling us, you didn't inform us, and this just happened, and you're just, you know, we're hot, you know? So.
We're going to tackle every way that we can possibly think of, in person, before we had little flyers that we left for folks, those are the, all those things we're going to be doing again. It's just, we can't make a promise, though, that everyone will be in the loop. There's likely to be someone in the project scope at some point in time who says, oh, I didn't know that was happening, whatever that particular point may be, but we're going to do our best.
That makes me ask, we are going to inform the public, our people, right before we start?
Oh, yes. The communication has already started, actually. It started earlier this year. I have monthly and now quarterly merchant meetings. This has been on the agenda every single time, every time we have a board meeting, whichever board it may be for downtown, this comes into conversation. Tomorrow, when this presentation goes up on our YouTube channel, they're getting a link to it along with everything that you have in your packet, will be on our website as well.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment, that people that approach me and want to talk about this are most concerned about parking, so I really like that your first slides, your first bits of information discuss the parking issue.
Yes, that is, that is, if it's not the number-one question, it's in the top three that I typically get, and the real key is, there, there was a couple of people who thought that we were going to not have any parking, and not only did I say, oh, no, that's not the case, we're actually going to have more parking, but sometimes, you know, like the game of telephone, not everyone hears accurate information, so we do our level best to get out there and correct it when we can.
I have a question about the bathrooms. I've been opposed to the bathroom since the first rendering of this. I, and I hear constantly that the bathrooms aren't maintained that we have. Now, I haven't been in it since I found somebody drunk and one of them at Island Park passed out when I was like six and I had to go get my mom, but I understand that they're, they're not maintained well, and I, I also understand that this one's going to cost over four-hundred-thousand dollars to build, and that seems astronomical when I'm looking at the cost to tear out, to remove Moser Street, additional parking, green space, electrical upgrades, and E.V. stations, that's four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, so to put up a bathroom is going to be over four-hundred-thousand.
Well, the model that we use was the same ones that we have had elsewhere throughout our parks, so the cost is consistent with, on those other locations. So, a couple of things, let's get into a little bit more of the, if you will, the details on the bathrooms. One of the things that the Parks Department is looking at are an automatic lock feature, at a certain time, they'd be timed, you can, you can do that, and building with, I'm just going to say, a little bit more robust materials, so they hold up to, I'm not going to say vandalism, but could be the case.
Sure.
Hurricane.
Tsunamis.
I hear that a lot, I mean, people are thrilled and don't think that we need them. I mean, there's some people that do, but I hear more often that they don't think it's a good idea, so.
I've heard from my business owners downtown that they are looking forward to it, so then that way, they're not asked to use their small, and many times, it's not ADA accessible, their, their restrooms within their buildings, and they've got to send someone, you know, well, I don't have space, or I can't have a stroller in there, whatever it might be, so this gives us an opportunity to meet all of those needs.
Sure.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yeah, so, a couple of things. Quick question, how will the parking with Winchester Towers work? One thing I hadn't noticed before, and this is in the diagram that I saw, but the removing Moser Street kind of combines with like their outer portion and everything.
Okay, so, Riverview Apartments?
Riverview Apartments, yes, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure that we, I was like, that was interesting, that's okay. So, they're going to be retaining their driveway access along Broadway, that is staying in place. So, really, the only portion of their lot that changes from Lot Three into their lot is in the center of the rendering, you're going to see where it looks like a drive opening, is going to be going into their parking lot. So, in its, I believe it's four and a half feet wider than what it is currently today for fire accessibility.
Cool, okay. Question about the diagram over here versus the picture we're seeing in the presentation?
Simply colored.
The big thing for me was the kind of the corner, like, looking at the crosswalks, it looks like the diagram over here, like, that we have in front of us doesn't have, like, cross, I don't know if you can pull up the picture possibly?
I don't, oh, let me see here. Okay. I'll bring this to you. Thank you, Michelle. That wasn't early rendering, the three-D version of it, but we won't have that bump-out area that you're talking about, that'll be pushed back, and it allows for trucks and larger vehicles to make that turn, plus it's more of our standard for thoroughfares now not to have those bump-outs in the corner.
Gotcha.
For our new zoning ordinance.
As someone who, and I believe it was September, was nearly hit twice going across that crosswalk, my question would be, like, would it provide more safety for pedestrians to have those sections bumped out potentially? Kind of, I know it's kind of give-and-take here and everything, but I just wanted to get kind of the thoughts on that.
Well, we'll have on-street parking now on the west side of Main and the north side of Broadway, so that should service with the ten-foot lanes to slow the traffic down, which will be helpful for pedestrians, and then having the new streetscape along the street too visually provides that to slow traffic down.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I had a question about ADA accessibility for just the area in general. This may have been, and we were talking about a number of improvements downtown a while back, and I remember some tidbit about like defining like ADA accessibility, like some, like, it's more helpful, like, we have smoother ramps versus, like, truly like qualifying as ADA accessible. Is that ringing any bells?
Are we talking about the, the plates that are at the intersections that have the little round, I mean, called labs, for lack of a better word? That is, so, if someone is visually impaired, that changes the sound if somebody is either walking or has a cane over it, so it alerts them that there's a change ahead of them, where a flat plate doesn't allow that.
Okay.
So, that's the difference.
Gotcha, so, but.
The reason behind it.
Yeah, the, the design, though, for, as it currently is ADA accessible, will anyone in a wheelchair would be able to move across, like?
Absolutely, yes.
And then, last thing is just kind of something, and this is also kind of pitching to the other commissioners here, I do apologize, but I mentioned to you briefly about a time capsule on your, you've kind of put that back to us as the commissioners, I don't know if anyone else. My, I, it was an idea that kind of came to me of like potentially doing a time capsule or something as part of this project, and I don't think I had the chance to discuss it, but it might not be the time to discuss it either.
And I was gonna say, I wouldn't say that that would need to be dropped into the construction drawings, that's something that we could look at even as we approach a little bit, I'm gonna say farther into the winter, early spring, that we could look at that, that's, I can't imagine, we would need to make that decision this evening.
Cool, awesome. And that concludes my time, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll look for any additions or deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions that the commission would like to have? Seeing none, I will take a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I move.
There a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. At this time, we're going to go into public comment on agenda items. At the end of our business meeting, we will have a work session. The work session is going to be on a presentation of the trap neuter and release program that we have. If you wish to speak, if you have something you would like to say about that, this would be the time that you say that, because during the work session, public comment is not taken. We do have two public comments, we have one here and one near the end of the meeting. With that said, if you wish to speak on something on the agenda, you may step to the podium, state your name and address, you'll be given five minutes. Is anybody joining us by Zoom today?
No, I'm not on Zoom.
Okay, so if you can come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes.
Mary Irvin, four-six-zero-eight South Isabella Road, apartment two-two-one, Mount Pleasant, Michigan. Although it's Union Township, my job here is crossing guard, and I have a couple of issues with regard to some of the posts. My crossing guard post at this point is at the corner of West Preston and South Watson, which is several blocks from Vowles Elementary School. And I thank you for allowing people to have a bit of public time on our behalf. I'm posted at a designated school crossing. Prior to this post, I was at South Kinney and High Street, part of the M-twenty cut-through, if you will, by Fancher Elementary School. Lately, I've come to that corner on my way home from being in the city, and it's dark some of those times, and for some reason, and I could be wrong about this, but at night, seems like the north-south red light there seems to go on continuously, so, opposed to having a brief time where people can go straight across or turn to the left. So, back to my post at Preston and Watson, there's an added extra safety factor there, which was placed there several years ago when John Zag was a public works official at the time. He worked with the Planning Committee or Commission here, which includes representatives from all the public safety departments, including someone from M.D.O.T. They placed a better light system at High and Kinney with the exception of adding a yellow and black sign with an adult-child crossing which has an add-on solar power light. There's none on High Street because M.D.O.T., quote, "did not want to put more on the grid, more electric power," or something, I don't get that, but. So, that being said, there are other places across town and some of the school crossings, the areas that are deemed to be high-traffic areas when schools are in session. Not all the schools have these solar power light things. Currently, at my post area, those lights have not been turned on as they have a timer that some worker or workers have to come up from Public Works Department and do whatever it is that starts these timers. So, the timers may be needing to be reset when there's time changes for seasonal issues. I called my Youth Services Supervisor and requested this be brought to the Public Works personnel to come and have it turned on, and nothing happened. So, I don't know what happened from, you know, did the message get passed or not, or did the message get packed and was not taken care of? I contacted Addie at City Hall, and she patched me into Public Works. The person who answered was aware of the solar power aspect, but did not seem to know someone is needed to come and turn on the timer, and again, so far, nothing has happened. This is why I've come here tonight. Thank you for time, and if you can help correct this, that'd be great. And here's a picture of one of the solar lights at my area.
There's actually two of them, but this is the one in Mount Preston. That's where, so there's another one down.
You can, you can keep this, Mary, if you want.
Oh.
I'm gonna pass this down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? Are there any emails? All right. At this time, I'm going to close public comment, and we'll move on to the received petitions and communications. Manager dissents.
Received petitions and communications includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission from September, and minutes of the Planning Commission from September.
All right, we're going to move on to consent items. Are there any consent items that the commission would like to have moved into the regular All right, seeing none, manager dissents.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held October twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, consider resolution and support a final approval of Temporary Traffic Control Order Number Six, two thousand twenty-three, consider resolution and support a final approval of Temporary Traffic Control Order Number Seven, two thousand twenty-three, consider committing American Rescue Plan Act funds to revenue replacement, consider resolutions number one and number two to commence the proceedings for special assessment, tentatively determine the necessity, and set a public hearing for November twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three regarding the necessity of Special Assessment District Number Two-Thousand Twenty-Four dash two thousand twenty-five, consider resolution confirming City of Mount Pleasant Development License Development Districts, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
I move.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, we will do a, let's see, if you, those who are in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearing. Public hearing is on the proposed two thousand twenty-four annual operating budget. Manager dissents.
Sure thing. City Commission will need to hold a public hearing this evening on the proposed two thousand twenty-four budget. The proposed budget will expend fifty-two million dollars, and the budget maintains the current sixteen-point-two-five millage rate from last year. The general fund will use sixty-nine-thousand-thirty dollars in unassigned fund balance, leaving the city with an estimated remaining unassigned fund balance of fifty-nine million dollars at the end of two thousand twenty-four. City Commission should take public input during the hearing. If there is no further input or questions as a result of the public hearing, staff would recommend the adoption of the two thousand twenty-four budget at this meeting under new business.
I think you meant five-point-nine million.
Fifty-nine million. A city manager can dream, my friend.
All right, at this time, we will take, we will open the public count, our public hearing. If you wish to speak or ask questions about the proposed two thousand twenty-four budget. If you wish to speak or ask questions about the proposed twenty twenty-four annual operating budget, you may come step to the podium, you'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to come in?
No hand up.
Are there any emails?
There are none.
Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak on the annual operating budget? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any clarifications that the City Commission needs at this time? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the proposed annual budget.
I think that's under new business.
We're gonna do it under new business?
Yeah, yeah, it did say that, didn't it?
Oh, yeah, because we have to consider a millage. All right, so at this time, we're going to close um, the public hearing, and we're going to move on to new business. The first part of new business is to receive and consider recommendations from the local officials' compensation commission regarding compensation for elected city officials. The city charter requires that the local officers' compensation commission to meet every five years and make a recommendation to the city commission regarding the compensation of elected officials. The last time this commission met was in two thousand eighteen. They held their first meeting um, the third day of October of this year and completed their work within forty-five days, which is required by the city charter. Their recommendation for this meeting is for an increase of five hundred dollars. At this time, are there any questions? Comments, concerns from the commission? Vice Mayor?
Um, this is just my opinion
Mm-hmm.
that I consider this very much a part-time job, so I'm not sure that that we need a raise.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments?
Can I just get a clarification?
Yeah.
Under, um, sorry if I cut someone off.
No, go.
Okay. Which department or which portion of the budget are funding comes from?
City Commission has its own department titled City Commission within the budget that is found in the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think um, City Manager descents has um, addressed my question. Plus, I didn't, you know, I didn't expect this. When I ran for the position, I didn't know there was any money associated with it, so.
Are there any other comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion. Okay, yeah.
So my understanding is that we can either say, you know, vote to accept or decline, we can't amend.
We're gonna have uh, Brian Hanson come forward.
Okay.
He's part of the mem, uh, part of the commission.
How's it going?
Going pretty good, how's it going with you?
I wasn't really supposed to be the person to talk, but he's not here, so talking's what I'm good at, so I guess here I am.
So tell us what?
So one of the things that we like noticed is Mount Pleasant is one of the lowest um, municipals paying in the state. And one of the things that we really put a lot of work and thought into, sorry, adrenaline, um, was that uh, you know, like this position requires a lot of time. And um, you really, at the pay rate that we currently have, it cuts off a lot of people's ability to have that time. Childcare, things like that, gas, we are, like I said, one of the lowest. It's almost looked like somewhat, when it was laid out, it was almost a little criminal. So we wanted to put some kind of vehicle in place for an improvement. So that like, it's not just rich people running for this position, to put it a little bluntly. So that was, that's the quick and dirty easy, but do you guys have any questions or anything?
Any questions?
No, I actually, I appreciate the clarification because it does help, you know, especially with the daycare and gas, you know, some people need it really, and there are people who may not necessarily worry about that, but it does make sense now, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and you know, we just want it to be more of an equalizer, not necessarily, you know, a job-job, it's still somewhat a serving position, but somewhat to offset that. And then you notice there's like a a a year-over-year thing that's new, that wasn't something that existed. It seemed like about every five years that this commission would get together and fight, and whoever yelled the loudest, it seemed like it would just kind of go wherever it was, it was like rolling the dice every five years. That's why there's like years there's none, there's some years it goes up a bunch. We tried to set more of a trajectory. One of the things we looked at was cost of living increases, you know, inflation, things like that. We tried to sort of put it on a year-over-year thing, so it's not just this, every five years, Mount Pleasant rolls the dice, and whoever's sitting in that room makes the decision, and then you guys get to yea or nay it and not necessarily adjust it, and then five years goes by. So we were trying to sort of set a trajectory and kind of a precedent for like a future committee, if I'm here, not there, he's not there, whoever it is kind of has a precedent for what a good idea is. So that was sort of our thinking in that, so.
Mr. Wang, go.
Yeah, do you know why, kind of like, might be more of an institutional question or culture, but like, why Mount Pleasant is the way it is, like versus some of the other like cities you were looking at, kind of?
From what I understand, it was a lot of times tried to be lowered back down to zero by people that felt that it should be a completely non-paid position, although it doesn't seem like any other cities agree with that statement. It just seemed like a lot of the people who were there at the time, um, from what we understand. Um, but it's hard to say, I mean, I wasn't in any of those rooms, and 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 you can kind of just see it sort of level off for a lot of long-term times, so. Um, and and again, like I just, you know, we got talked about a lot, we felt like it really cut off the ability for people to do this and have the time in their schedules. I mean, my partner was was a city commissioner, was vice mayor, and you know, I understand it's a huge commitment to read these packets, and really like, you know, we want, the city wants people to read those packets that care what's in them, it takes the time on them, not do what they can around everything else going on in their lives. And this sort of creates a better mechanism for those people, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for, I mean, maybe people aren't aware of that, we make fifteen hundred dollars a year. And I do, you know, I've talked about this, I don't, I don't, none of us do this for fifteen hundred dollars, right? Uh, but there is value to our time. I mean, it it's, it's time away from our families, it's, and so I, I work for a nonprofit, and I tell you, people think even working for a nonprofit, you should work for free. I mean, that's just not the reality, so I I do appreciate you guys respecting that and and valuing that.
And you know, coming here has a cost, whether you wanna say it does or not.
Sure.
You know, reading that packet has a cost, it takes away from something, so.
Every time you say yes to something, you say no to something else, and I think that's where we found ourselves.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, with this clarification, um, if I will open up the floor for a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation of um, a increment, you know, salary, I don't know what to call it, increase for the city commission as recommended.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. This time, we will take a um, a vote, all those in favor say yes.
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 All those opposed, no.
No.
All right, we will um, move on to number four, which is um, now we are going to look at the resolution approving the final twenty twenty-four operating budget and setting the millage rate for twenty twenty-four. Manager descents.
So we discussed the high points of the budget at this point, fifty-two million dollars in total spending. Um, I will go back and correct myself on that, that would be by the end of twenty twenty-four, five point nine million at the end of twenty twenty-four in unassigned general fund balance. Sixteen point two five millage rate, the same as it has been in years past, we're asking the city commission to consider adapting the resolution before you, this would adapt the budget as well as set the millage rate.
Are there any questions, any comments, confirmations?
Yeah, just wanted to comment, I think this was, um, there's a lot of thought put into this, and there was all, um, throughout the packet, there was a lot, or the budget, there was a lot of forward-looking things, um, which I appreciated from staff. I wanted to thank um, Finance Director Saladin um, for walking through a number of things with me on it, and so I just, again, appreciate staff working with us on this.
And this means that we are not raising the millage? We're keeping it the same, which is sixteen point two five?
That's correct, yes.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation to um, adopt the the current millage rate at sixteen point two five.
Does that include accepting the operating budget?
And and yes.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Do I do roll call on this? No? Okay. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to the resolution supporting amended rates and fees, rates, fees and charges. Manager descents.
Our twenty twenty-four budget is supported by the increase of various fees for water, sewer rates, uh, other fees and fines. In your city commission pack, you'll find a full list of the proposed charges, changes to rates and fees. This includes a thirty percent increase in sewer fees to support the debt service for the WRF upgrades. This increase will result in anticipated three dollars and sixty-seven cents per month for the average household in Mount Pleasant. Water rates will increase by two percent, just as a cost of living adjustment and a cost to do business adjustment. There are some changes proposed for construction permit fees, which you'll find those in your city commission packet as well, too. Lastly, an increase is proposed for peak summer program to offset the operation of the program. The increase sets the rate at five hundred dollars for an in-district uh, child to go to the program, six hundred dollars for out-of-district, two hundred fifty dollars for in-district in-needs scholarship recipients, and three hundred dollars for out-of-district in-needs scholarship recipients.
And the peak program is for both the elementary and the middle school?
Correct.
And it's a six-week program?
That's correct.
Are there any questions?
I thought peak was year-round.
This is for the summer program.
Oh, just the summer program?
Yeah, just the, the cost increase is only on that six-week summer program.
Oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, this, this, this question has to do with the water rates. So I um, I uh, somebody in my neighborhood called my attention to um, charges on a bill that has to do with, you know, the separation of, you know, the drinking water and irrigation, you know, and there is a charge there if you don't, I mean, apparently, you know, the person hasn't used much water for the irrigation, but received a charge. I can't explain it, so I would like some explanation. Is that, do we have a flat rate, whether or not you use?
I see what you're saying.
You irrigate, you know?
Yes, correct, yes. So uh, for a connection for a household that is connected to water, there is a flat-rate connection fee, which covers most of our fixed costs within the operations, then you have a variable rate based on how much you actually utilize.
Okay.
And so that covers more variable charges that we have in the business.
All right, that helps, because I tried to say that, but I wanted to make sure that I was saying the right thing. Okay, cool.
I have a question about permit fees. What is the increase for? I mean, like, the signed permit fee from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah.
That doesn't, I don't understand that.
Yeah, so a a lot of that just has to do with staff time, uh, the amount of staff that takes a look at that, so you're not talking just the building inspector, you're also talking for planning review as well, too, and it's just, we're taking a look at that and saying, all right, based on the amount of staff time that it takes to review those kind of permits, et cetera, it's this much, there's a hundred and fifty-dollar charge, so that's what the recommendation is based off of.
Yeah, the, well, in two thousand eighteen, permit for a special-use permit went from, I think it was maybe six hundred dollars to one thousand and fifty dollars. And my problem with this is, when I do my job, I get paid to do my job, right? So any extra job that I do, I shouldn't charge more money for it, and I I know I've I've had this discussion quite often, but it, for me, it's frustrating when I look at this and I see, I mean, I, I'm a business owner in town and I just put up a sign. I know what it took. Five to ten minutes, and we're charging a hundred and fifty bucks. I'm not for that, I, I mean, and especially with the special-use permit, I mean, I understand we've, they've talked about, there's a lot of people that, like especially a planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
Planning commission is all volunteer, and so they spend their time going through these, and then we're charging a thousand and fifty dollars. I I just, I don't think that's right, I think that 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 causes a lot of people to not access the services that their taxes are paying for, because they can't pay a thousand and fifty dollars to do that. And it's really a frustration of mine that we, I mean, these things just keep going up for, like, I mean, a swimming pool in grounds, two hundred bucks now. I I just, I I don't agree with these, with the, with the increase in permit fees.
Yeah. If I can, Commissioner, just to um, shed some light, I think, on the philosophy that goes behind some of this. You know, one, the the concept that every signed permit or every charge for for reviewing a signed uh, proposal is gonna be a hundred and fifty dollars, that's more or less an average that we look at. So there certainly are instances in which, um, maybe let's say something is a little more textbook, you know, you've just got a single sign that you're proposing, and it's very textbook per the ordinance, that becomes very quick and easy for staff to do inside, but not every case is as um, cut and dry as that, and so when someone is proposing something, you know, fairly different, um, it has a, you know, a unique shape or a unique setup, um, has electrical components, those kind of things, those do take more time for the staff to review. When it comes to rates and fees uh, related to the building department and to planning, and this is just coming back to a um, philosophical view, it's, it's how much do you want the taxes or the general fund dollars to go to those services versus how much of the cost of those services should be paid by the individuals who are utilizing those services, so the developers, the builders, the business owners who are having signs or alterations to their building or anything like that. And it was, and I I couldn't tell you the exact year, but I was told that it was the philosophy of previous commissions to this, that more of the charge for those actual services be put to the actual users of those services, so that way less tax dollars, let's say, go to the planner or the billing um, department director, and then those tax dollars would be used elsewhere in the organization. So that's just a general philosophy that we've inherited here, if you will.
No, I get that, but at the end of the day, whether, whether these, whether somebody's getting an in-ground pool or not, the the person inspecting that in-ground pool is getting paid the same, right, by the tax dollar. And so to 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 then to say, well, there's a permit fee that's gonna pay the person, well, it's not, the person's gonna get paid regardless, and so it's just frustrating to me because I, I don't get paid extra when I do my job, right? And nor do they get paid extra to do their job, and so it's like, we, we already, our taxes are so high, we have a sixty million-dollar budget, you know, I mean, to then charge people for using the service that their taxes are already paying for is just frustrating to me. I understand, I mean, there's, there's, I understand there's a permit, so people, one, I mean, people aren't just, just wasting everybody's time, I get that, um, but then to keep increasing them, I just don't agree with it.
Under what circumstances would an increase be acceptable?
Because there was a huge increase, almost double in two thousand eighteen.
Oh, no, 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 like, my, my question, I guess, kind of like, on, like, as we're discussing this, under what circumstances would you support ra-raising fees or ra-raising um, charges?
I don't know that there needs to be permit fee increase, because people are already paid to do these things. I mean, they're already doing them whether, whether there's a fee increase or not, their, their salary and their job is to do these things. That's like, it's like the police department getting a call and, well, we're gonna charge you a thousand bucks as we had to show up, well, you're getting paid to show up, right? I I, I just, I just don't agree with it.
And that just helps me better understand, like, your, your philosophy towards this, so I appreciate that, thank you. that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I just have one, I just have one comment that I, I don't know if I'm reading it right or if it's a typo, but it's on, it's on page seventy four of the packet, and it's under the permit fees. And then it says, you know, two thousand eighteen, and then proposed for twenty twenty four. I understand that. But when you go most of the way down, there's one that says temporary certificate of occupancy, and it says a hundred and fifty, but then on the proposed, it says a hundred and fifty increase. So to me, is it a typo that it's still one hundred and fifty, or is it going up to three hundred?
Trying to find what page on the packet.
Seventy four.
Out middle of the page.
Yeah, the, the other ones, the increase amount is always higher, so I, so that's why I'm a little confused.
It's in red to the far right, after no charge, no change, no change.
Yeah, no change, yep. Temporary C of O, one fifty to one fifty. I think you're right in that case, Vice Mayor. I think it looks like that is a typo there, that we're calling out an increase where there is no increase.
Yeah.
We'll have to fix that.
Well, I'm glad it's not going up to three hundred.
Oh, four. I was worried that might be four. I, I do need to
Go ahead.
I, I, I want to address my colleagues' concern. I, I understand that. I understand that people are hired to do certain things. But we also, I, you know, listen, I'm probably not going to own any of the things, you know, ask for any of these services. But the reality, too, is that we have to think about, you know, the salaries of the people who are doing this and the cost of living, right, you know, the whole range of things that, you know, we need to do to maintain that particular position. So if people are not requesting making this request, would the person necessarily go there? The way I'm looking at this is, when I have a heating emergency, a furnace emergency, even though I have insurance, and then I call the person that I'm supposed to call, and, and they say to me, if I come here, you're going to have to pay this amount of money, then what? Okay. So is this, you know, do we want, I think this has to address some compliance issues, too. Do we want people, you know, to be available to do this job or not do this job? And how do you sustain that particular position in the absence of any kind of increase in terms of, you know, the fees?
But this isn't going to increase their salary.
But it does, you know, make, you know, so, manager dissents, what do, you know, where do the fees go then? What are we using the fees for? If that's, it sounds to me
I've had a lot of conversations since two thousand seventeen. That's why I know a lot about this.
I want to hear him, you know, I, I mean, I haven't heard this, you know, I, I, you know, this is, this is, I have not had this conversation. So here is manager dissents. I would like, like him to say, this is where the fees go. And if we're not going to do anything, then let's, let's have some clarity. So where do the fees go then?
So typically, most of these fees, what we're talking about, typically will go to building to offset the cost of building. Again, it just comes back to a philosophy of, do you want more of the general fund dollars, the tax dollars going to the building department, or do you want to utilize those dollars for other things? And one way of freeing up those dollars for other things, whether it be parks or what have you, is to charge the direct user. So the idea here is to capture more of the funds of the user of these services to go directly towards building, or in certain cases, towards planning as well, too, for site plan reviews, and to put those dollars directly to those departments, thus freeing up general fund dollars that would otherwise go there to be used for other areas of the organization.
It, it makes sense to me, because for me, it addresses an, an area of, you know, I mean, yes, it's not a huge amount of money, but, you know, it does address other needs, you know, gaps elsewhere. I, I do recall a similar thing that has to do with fees, the kind of fees we'll charge or would recover, you know, when we're talking about parking spaces and parking and the use of spaces, you know, even though it's parking space, people will park there. But we're saying, you know, the question that came up was, if you want to maintain this particular space, parking spaces, and, you know, attend to, what was it, you know, director Luria, attend to the ticketing and all that, how do we sustain that? How do we recover the money? And I think there is a parallel with this one, where if you're going to use this, this service, then somehow you have to pay for it, you know, even if it's, I mean, I'm not sure whether the increase is necessary, but I do think that there needs to be a fee.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not saying get rid of fees. I just don't think we need to increase them.
Okay. So that's a different conversation.
I'm a reasonable human being. Didn't you see my signs?
You what? What?
Said, I'm a reasonable human being. Didn't you see my signs everywhere?
Oh.
I don't think we should get rid of them. I just don't think we should increase them.
That sounds reasonable.
That sounds reasonable.
So again, just to, it was two thousand seven when that
No, 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 two thousand eighteen. Two thousand seventeen, eighteen, almost everything doubled.
Gotcha.
And it, yeah.
So as someone who has never engaged with this system, just kind of like getting, getting more clarity from work, um, looking at it, because of that increase in two thousand eighteen, you don't, like, you think the, the fees are at a rate where they're going to be sustainable for, like, a good period of time?
At least till next year when we talk about it. I mean, the, the reality is, like, a, a lot of these permits, like, a thousand bucks to go before the planning commission, it's a thousand, thousand and fifty dollars to go before the planning commission. That's, that's asinine to me. It was like six hundred bucks. And so now to do, not to even, to even present to the planning commission, I mean, you're having to pay a thousand and fifty bucks, and they could say no. And now you're just out a thousand and fifty bucks. And so that's, that's where my understanding of all the fees started to come was because of knowing that increase. And then I, and then I, my understanding was all the fees, all the permit fees went to the general fund. That's what I was told at one point. I don't know if that's true or not.
In a manner of speaking, yeah, just because that's where they have to get receipted. But again, the idea is to offset the cost of what our planning department or our building department puts into providing those services.
I mean, I, 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 I do think that, you know, in keeping with everything that happens in this society, you know, where people provide surfe- services and bill you for the services that they provide, this is not a misnomer. You know, it's not a misnomer. Hey, the other day I was screaming because somebody, you know, came to check my, you know, check something for me, and I'm looking at this fee going, oh, my God, this is too high. What just happened? The response was, everything has gone up. That was the response. Everything, the price of everything has gone up, at least thirty percent in some places, twenty percent in some places. Is this in keeping with that? That's the way I'm looking at it. Have you gone to the supermarket to buy anything that used to be maybe nine cents, and now it's two dollars and ninety nine cents? So that's what, what I'm reading here. So I think maybe that it is just, you know, it has, we have to be in keeping with the changes that are happening around us, you know, in order to survive. I understand that we don't want these increases, but the city also has to maintain certain services. And how do we do that in the absence of additional revenues? We don't have a huge industry that gives us money, you know, so otherwise, you get the taxes, I get the taxes. So that's the option. And I, I don't know what to say right now, I'm just really, you know, but I am looking at this thinking, yeah, it's difficult. But in keeping with everything else that's happening around us, the increasing cost of services, gasoline, you name it, what then, you know, what options do we have, really? If you come up with one, let me know. I will support you.
I just try to get you to support me to say, don't increase the charges.
I think we have to be fiscally responsible.
I know, but we can't say, because here's what we can do. We can, we can continue to say, because everything's going up. Everybody else also has the opportunity then say, well, everything else is going up, let's just raise it. Because it's not like, this isn't, this isn't based on materials, right? This is based on somebody coming to fill out a piece of paper and getting it approved. I mean, there, some of these things are more, more than just that, but some of these, a sign, for example, that's literally all it is. Somebody coming out, somebody driving out looking at the sign. I mean, for some, some of the monument signs, it's a little different. There's electrical in them, there's different things. But it's not like, it's, this is, if, if, what I'm understanding you're saying is this, like, because of the cost of goods are up, this is just in following suit with that, but this has nothing to do with the cost of goods.
But they're using gasoline to get to that place, and we have to also reimburse them for that, don't we? Do we reimburse them for the use of gasoline? We do. I'm just simply, you know, I, I am thinking about fiscal responsibility. Okay? Do we have a responsibility to the, you know, to the city, to, you know, to make sure that, you know, services are provided and efficiently and adequately? You don't do it, people start complaining that, you know, they, they make a call, nobody shows up, then what? That's a different kind of complaint. I just, I don't know. I mean, I, I have, other than, you know, the city, I have nothing else. I have no property to worry about when it comes to all these things. My concern, my focus is the city, you know, and, and making sure that it's fiscally healthy.
Commissioner Wingard. Kind of putting this to Commissioner Dissents, or not Commissioner, Aaron. Manager Dissents, thank you. So I know it's a bit before your time. In two thousand eighteen, when the last time these fees were, were raised, as it was described, they'd nearly doubled, doubled?
Almost.
What, do you know, kind of, from like, talking with other staff members, why that was? Was that the change in philosophy that you were talking about of, like, it needs, putting the onus more on to the individual applicants versus the taxpayers? Is that kind of what occurred then? Or any other staff who might be willing to comment?
Our Finance Director was around.
So, yep, I've been here for a little bit. In two thousand seventeen, we got City Commission directive basically to look at all user fees, because they hadn't been updated in, like, years and years prior to. And so basically, the City Commission's philosophy was fees that basically benefit one user or property owner. It is something they generally have a choice in, and whether or not they want to do the activity. At that point, then, we should charge a fee that covers a hundred percent of the cost for that service. The commission policy had an exemption specifically for recreation programming, because if we had to charge full bore on that, I mean, that would disincent each of us from being able to participate. So they carved out that one exemption. The last time the building permit fees were raised was two thousand eighteen, so it's been five years. And, you know, we kind of looked at it, looked at it. And then this year, when we kind of did the full bore analysis, it was some of the fees based on the time, and things change in what we have to review versus two thousand seventeen, five years ago. So that was some of the other reason behind the, the fee changes and why some went up and some didn't, because some of the processes, processes have changed. So that's sort of a brief history behind the, how we got to where we are today with these recommendations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to entertain a motion. Unless there's something, new information?
No, no.
New questions? We've bounced this question around a little bit, so.
I move to appro- approve the proposed fees and charges.
I will second.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
All right, motion carries.
All these no votes today.
Considered contract amendment with Fishback Engineering for Water Resource Recovery Facility Rehabilitation Project. Manager dissents.
So the city's initial plan for construction oversight for the WRF Rehabilitation Project was to be completed by the city's Deputy Director of Public Works. The individual in that position possessed skills and credentials to provide this oversight. However, this job has recently become vacant. The city does not have the capability in-house to provide the entirety of oversight. The city's engineering contractor, Fishback Engineering, has provided a contract amendment from, from their firm to provide this oversight. Consideration was given to other options, including the use of another firm. However, it would be inappropriate for another firm to provide construction oversight, given the likely differing opinion on project design and the risk of liability that could result in the fallout. Staff is currently reviewing the capability and capacity of providing some level of oversight to offset the proposed cost. At this time, it is unclear how much and to what level of oversight staff can provide. Therefore, the City Commission is asked to approve a contract amendment with Fishback Engineering for the full scope of oversight services from now until December twenty twenty five, at a rate estimated at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This amount will be billed on an as-needed basis. Staff will continue to look for ways to offset this cost over the next two years. Funds for this contract amendment are available from the debt provided through the CWSRF program that we're in with the state, which funds the WRF project, and from plant reserve funds.
Are there any questions or clarifications needed?
Yeah, I, I have, I have questions. So am I to understand from what, I, I had to read this a couple of times, but, okay, just hearing you read it. I want to make sure that it's, that Fishback is going to provide oversight on, on this work?
Correct.
Okay.
So they're basically going to provide a project manager?
Yeah. Is there possible conflict of interest for them?
No, no, this is very typical.
That's why I'm asking this.
This is very typical in these kinds of instances, where you would have, you know, Fishback provide not just the engineering design work, but also the construction engineering oversight as well, too. So these are very common.
Okay. And I see the penultimate paragraph or the last paragraph of their piece before your, the recommendation, and they will do this one day per week for the construction period, duration through final completion? And then what happens? So would that give us enough time to find somebody then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Can I have you jump up? I'm going to bring up our Public Works Director, Jason Moore, here, because he's a little more in touch with some of the operations.
Yeah, that's where I'm not clear. So, okay.
Yeah, so at, at that point, the, the project will be finished, and so the services will no longer be needed. And so that, this is, this contract amendment is really kind of a worst-case scenario that Fishbook, Fishback has put together for us. Like Aaron said, we're looking at ways to, you know, lessen that cost by providing services, these services in-house. And of course, we say, you know, we're here on site, and so we don't have to drive in and all that. And so that's part of the, the major cost with having Fishback provide these services, so.
I have one last question. Let's assume that, okay, in the process of providing this oversight, there, we end up in a conflictual situation between the people providing oversight on a project that they're working with, working on, and the city. What then happens?
So Fishback is already providing the project oversight. It's just that we are having to have some more services, because we don't have a person on site to help with maybe some of the minor inspections of, say, foundations or excavations or things like this. And so there's no real change in who's representing us on site. Fishback is still responsible for that. And so really, I guess I can't say that would never happen, but it, it's unusual for the owner to ha-have a conflict with the engineer who's representing them. They're there to keep track of the general contractor and the subs and, and make sure that they're following the specs and, and that sort of thing, so.
No, I'm not talking about them having a conflict with the engineer representing them, but with the city. Since they are providing oversight to this project that they are engaged in or that they are doing for the city and they are
Oh, right, okay, so.
That's what I'm asking about.
Fishback's not actually doing the work that's a general contractor that they're overseeing, yeah, and so
That's why I wasn't getting clarity.
Fishback's relationship with the city is more like our, our city attorney.
Okay.
They're, they're there to protect our interests.
That makes sense now. Okay, thank you very much. I needed clarity there.
All right, any other questions, any other clarification?
How much more is this than the employee that was going to do it?
I guess I haven't ran the fully burdened cost of the employee, like I guess I haven't ran the fully burdened cost of the employee. Like I say, that'd be tough to make that an apples to apples comparison because that employee was actually doing other things for us as well. So.
Sure.
Um, yeah, it it definitely shows the value of, you know, city staff, I think.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So for but this amount is a one-time payment. It's, you know, it's for the duration of this project as opposed to an annual payment?
Correct. Yes. This runs all the way through the end of the project, which is the end of 2025.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That helps.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. This time I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, so I guess I will move to accept the recommendation to approve a contract amendment with Fishback. Do you want me to read all of this? Engineering for $260,000 to provide additional services and oversight for the completion of the Wharf Rehabilitation Project.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those of, um, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Okay, now we're moving on to consider reappointments to various boards and commissions. And I'm going to hand this over to Vice Mayor Al Sager.
Hey, well, the stage that we're in now is not where we're looking to fill vacancies, but what was occurring was Addy was contacting people that were currently on different commissions and boards, whose terms would have been up at the end of this year to see if they want to continue on for another term. So that's what we're approving now. People that are currently on boards and commissions that choose to get reappointed.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
I move that we accept the recommendation to reappoint the people who are listed here to the various boards and committees and commissions.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay, so now we're going to review the 2023 Broadway Central and consider recommendation for 2024 and beyond. Manager Dissents.
All right. We're joined this evening by our Downtown Director, Michelle Sponteller. So she'll be here for some questions or anything like that the city may have or City Commission may have. But she did provide a background on the Broadway Central program since its inception and on its current operations. With construction of Town Center in 2024, staff is recommending the discontinuation of Broadway Central. The reasoning is that the community will lose nearly 100 spaces during the construction process and that Broadway Central spaces could be used to facilitate those parking needs during that time. Staff also sees the new Town Center as being a space that can provide the amenities of Broadway Central, such as eating and hangout space for downtown visitors. Thus, staff is recommending the cessation of Broadway Central into the future, even after the construction of Town Center. Anyone who would want to have a conversation on this one? It's been topic of new business, I think, every year since I've been here now. So I just wanted to keep that tradition running.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Director Sponteller, was there anything you wanted to add to that or anything like that?
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Straightforward.
No?
Commissioner Wingard? Yep. You're a writer and there's gonna be one. Personally, I really enjoyed Broadway Central in its original form is what brought me to living into the downtown area where I am currently at. And I know I have never talked to I wasn't here when compromises were made with business owners to make it more appealing to the whole community. So I know there's background I'm missing there, but I've never spoken to a person who has had an ill thing to say about fully closing down the streets. Now, with that in mind, I know that the Town Center, I am very excited for the work that we're doing there. And I think that is going to be a really big asset to our downtown area. But I don't think it should be a situation where we're looking at this and saying, well, we have a Town Center, so we don't have to do work elsewhere. And I feel that's kind of the attitude that comes with this of just permanently discontinuing the Broadway Central initiative. I I don't know what kind of solution I'm looking for here, but I feel like we should be looking for more opportunities to create more spaces to engage in the downtown area. And I feel like this ends up eliminating some. I understand the compromises we're working on and there's a lot of different interests in the community overseeing this, but that's my thoughts on on this. One thing, the only other thing I really want to add, I know we probably already know what we're going to do on this, but with the downtown, Midori and Ponder Coffee are businesses that have chosen to keep their patio seating that is built out. And I think in the coming years, well, like, there's a possibility we could lose that aspect of the downtown. I would just ask staff as we look for potential redesigns of the downtown area, that we could look at having an expanded space like that is in front of Max and Emily's, another staple of the downtown area where the city has provided patio area that is much more permanent. It requires a lot less maintenance and it's just built in for that, again, a staple of the downtown area. So that's all I have. I'd be happy to talk with my fellow commissioners, but yeah.
Commissioner Ake.
I I hear you, Commissioner Wingard, my colleague. I hear your opinion. Um, you know, considering that we are not going to be done with, you know, the city center before the end of the summer, you know, I'm wondering whether it is really urgent that we close, you know, that we discontinue Broadway Central before, you know, for 2024. I mean, I, you know, I would like to at least keep it open or some part of it open till we are done with, you know, with the the project. And then, you know, at that point, look at it again and decide whether or not to close it permanently or at least to have some aspect of it open. I understand the need for parking, really. But at the same time, if you if we, you know, shut it down, then and we're not done with, you know, that space, is it here that way, you know, over there? Yeah. And we're not done with with that particular project, you know? So I mean, you know, my 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 inclination is to say hold off at least for one year. I mean, let them overlap and see how that works. And we come back to it. I don't know. Am I making sense?
Well, I think there's gonna be a lot of lot of people displaced from those parking spots.
Yeah, but how many how many how?
I mean, a lot of people displaced from the parking lots that's gonna be tore up.
I understand how much parking spaces are we losing, you know, with.
We'll lose 133 during the time that we're building this.
No, I.
I know, but we'll lose 133 during that time because we'll lose space in Jockey Alley for some of the equipment to be housed. So 133 parking spaces in the immediate downtown area is a lot.
That's a lot, yeah.
It is a lot. But I would like to ask Director Sponteller, there are a lot of times we have things that happen in the downtown area on Broadway. Are we still going to do that? Are we still going to do like the Craft Beer Festival in that area?
Yes, short-term events that, yes, we can certainly do that. Some of those conversations we've already started having with our event organizers to explain, you know, there's going to be construction just adjacent to you. Things could be a little, I want to say, a little messy perhaps. So you just plan accordingly. For example, we're been in discussions with Art Walk or, excuse me, Art Reach. So instead of painting the intersections, because if you have big equipment coming through, it's likely to ruin the nice painting. So find another location, for example, for that. But certainly for one-day events, we can certainly accommodate that. Yes. I don't see any problem with that.
Could you remind me again how many parking spaces we lose with Broadway Central when we, you know, when we close those sections?
Oh, goodness.
I think nine.
I believe it is nine.
So 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 we lose nine parking spaces?
Yes, but more important than the number is the location. Taking the parking from just adjacent to that, we've now put an extra burden on those businesses of now customers, most importantly, the customers having to walk even farther away. Normally, you're not going to hear me talk about, you know, walking distances to businesses. However, in this particular case, we're taking two of the largest parking lots offline essentially for six months.
Yes, yes.
I understand that people like this. It's just, this is one of those times where I just can't in good conscience do that.
Practical. Yes. Thank you.
I would just like to say also, as the person who initiated this conversation during construction, I fully understand the need to close down. I'm more looking at to the idea of in perpetuity, just closing down Broadway Central. That that's my biggest grievance thought on the idea. But during construction, that makes complete sense to me why we're doing that.
I think you could word a motion the way you want it worded.
Okay. I mean, we can always revisit it after, you know, to see if there's, you know, if it is needed, if we needed to capture the nice spaces. I understand the need now. Thank you for the clarification. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. A motion to discontinue the Broadway Central Initiative.
One second.
All right. The two of you.
I'm gonna do a roll call.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? No?
No.
Thank you. We'll move on to announcements of city-related issues and new business. We have, this is where the Commission can bring forward anything that they wish the staff to look at, or they have announcements in the city. Are there any announcements or new business that the Commissioner would like to speak on?
It's Native American History Month. We do have a land acknowledgement statement that says we honor, you know, the Saginaw Chippewa tribe. We honor the Anishna Beck, people of the Three Fires. And so it is Native American History Month, and a lot of things are happening on campus and in the Zibberwing Center. So I think it is important for us to also be in compliance, you know, with land acknowledgement statements and, you know, hopefully participate in these events that help us to better understand the contributions of Native Americans, you know, to this land, you know, where we all live and work, and to acknowledge those contributions, but also acknowledge that Native people, indigenous people have experienced trauma and as a result of colonization and other forms of, you know, biases, including racism. So I do hope that we go to CMU and to the Zibberwing and, you know, to experience some of these events. There is a film that is also happening. I don't know whether it's still in town. It is called Killers of the Flower Moon. It's about the massacre of Osage Indians in the 1930s. So we know about the Trail of Tears. We know about a lot of massacres. So I encourage us as individuals, but also as members of this community, you know, to participate, learn more. Thank you for giving me space. Thank you, really.
Are there any other announcements? Comments? All right. At this time, we're going to open up the floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak, you may come to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No recents.
Okay. Any emails?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Then I'm going to close the public comment. And I am going to ask the Commission if we can just go right into work session. Yes? Okay. All right. Then we are going to move right into work session. Our work session is on the TNR program.
Right. Perfect. So we're talking about the city's TNR program, the Trap Neuter Release Program that the Public Safety Division does. So we are joined here by our Fire Chief Doug Lobzinger. We are joined by our Public Safety Director, Paul Loria. They present, they have provided a presentation to the City Commission that they will take us through this evening and essentially utilize that to tee up our conversation tonight.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're back once again to talk a little bit about our TNR program. Yeah, it's right there.
I was just waiting for them to.
I'm so sorry.
No kidding.
I haven't ate anything all day. I'm so sorry.
You're fine. I was just waiting for me to get their presentation on.
What are you trying to take his?
What's that?
He was making jokes.
If you remember, we started our TNR program in 2021, after a drastic increase of feral cats. The past three years, we have administered a program with using code enforcement officials. And we currently had two. Code officers are responsible for assuring all city ordinances are being followed. So what is the TNR program? It was designed to protect and improve the lives of the stray and feral cats that we have in the community. It's been adopted by many communities nationwide, stabilizes feral cat populations by humanely trapping them, sterilizing them, getting them some vaccinations before returning them back to their habitat. Programs normally run from June to October. That's basically fair weather days. We can't be trapping animals, having surgeries and releasing them in the cold weather because they shave their bellies and so forth. So five months anyways. Started by receiving a lot of complaints. We started seeing a lot of feeding stations set up and takes time to establish these as well. Cats are housed in a secure area. They're fed and checked. They're also de-fleet before they're taken to a veterinarian. They are cared cared to by a licensed veterinarian, whether it's spayed or neutered, vaccine, ear-nipped, and they also get a microchip. And then they get released, if not adopted out. If they have any chance of being adopted, they, we try to get them adopted out. We do have a city ordinance. Animals are not allowed to be euthanized except when determined by a licensed veterinarian. We've had that happen one time. And that was after a short stint of hospital care. Staff completes about a 40-hour TNR certifying program through the United States Humane Society. This training cost has been absorbed through the DPS Building, Department of Public Safety. We currently have 135 cats been through the program over the last three years. Fortunately, been able to rehome about 30% of those. And like I said, we had to through euthanasia, put one down due to the condition it was in. We have come up with a few options to look at tonight. I'm gonna let the Director talk about those.
So it was the desire of this Commission to kind of enhance the program or wanting some options. And these are some of the ones that we came up with. The first is status quo. We can have our code enforcement continue to do that. And the the pros of that is that it keeps it in-house, efficient, convenient oversight of the process. The code enforcement officer is a recognized official that wears, you know, kind of city logo emblem along with their truck. The responsibility and accountability solely lies with the city employee. We do something wrong, or you have questions, the buck stops with me. So. We do something wrong, or you have questions, the buck stops with me, so. The cons, it's definitely time-consuming. When we do the TNR program and we put out our traps, you have prep work and the feeding, then you put out the traps. If you, if you catch a cat, it goes through the process that Fire Chief Lobzinger described. But we don't let it sit baking the sun, you know, get dehydrated or anything like that. So that code enforcement officer is paying attention to those in, very intently. And it takes them away from their other duties of, you know, the International Property Maintenance Code and other city ordinances, so. And then it's just limited time to devote to the program. So we adjust that priority scale all the time, given on what, what comes up. Obviously, we all know that in the spring, grass comes up and we have an ordinance with that. So that may become a priority versus the cats when you're only dealing with two people. The second option is have a third party do it, contract with a third party to administer the program. The pros, obviously, it did free up the code enforcement officer's time so they can focus on their ordinance duties. The third party devotes time to strictly TNR. Of course, the cons, direct oversight of the program would be challenging. Possibility of conflicts between community groups and veterinarians. And if a disagreement occurs, who becomes the mediator? The third option is we could hire a part-time public safety employee to administer and run the TNR program. Reduce costs compared to a full-time code enforcement person doing the work. Code officer would again have more time to do their enforcement duties. Part-time employee would be solely focused on the TNR program, and it keeps the accountability and control within the Division of Public Safety. Some of the cons, part-time employee would require training, and there may be a high turnover rate, which then, you know, has its own inherent problems of lack of efficiency and whatnot. So with that, I'll just go through the summary. Status quo, keep it as-is, two code enforcement officers, doing it as time allotted. Option two, contract the TNR service out. If this is the desired option, we're gonna need some direction on what the desired goal, goal is. What does success look like? How to address oversight of the third party? And we're gonna have to develop an RFP to solicit for those services. And then the third option is hire a part-time employee dedicated to TNR only. And I would be interested, and we, we kind of got the months that we do it. I would be interested in what your thoughts were on number of hours per week that you would recommend. So with that.
I have a question. Is it common, or is it true that we've always had two code enforcement officers? I thought for a while we only had one.
Well, we had a retirement, and due to that retirement, yes, we had one as we were going through the hiring process. So we're back up to two now.
Okay. And you think there's enough work for two just to do their code enforcement work?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if you think back, you know, we just adopted the IPMC and while we're not gonna go out there and, you know, write tickets and, but that is a whole nother tool that really opens up what they're able to address, so.
For me, option two, just, I would take that out of the equation personally. I don't trust a third party, you know, I, you guys have done a fantastic job with this program. I'd like to see you continue to either facilitate it or oversee it in a way that it can continue to be successful.
How many cats are, feral cats are in Mount Pleasant, would you, if you had to guess?
Couple thousand, I guess.
Any number I give will be, will be debated and torn apart. I would just say, we know that they're an issue, and we're doing everything we can to address it. And in three years, we have been able to manage to get 135. I think that is, I would hesitate to say that we're scratching the surface. They, they have a litter of.
Three to six.
Three to six, so do the math.
Two or three times a year.
Yeah, two or three times a year.
Able to kind of just outpace what we're able to keep up with, yeah.
The other question, do you know about every time we pick up, do successfully pick up a cat, spay, neuter, clipping the ear, hospital stay? What's the average cost per cat?
I can get that information to you. It, it all depends if everything is equal and that's what it.
Picture of health, yeah.
Do you know what the cost is? Why don't.
You can, you can, yeah, that's, that's okay.
Let's do it that way, because I don't want to give a cost.
Someone is coming.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, our numbers, this isn't our numbers though, so.
Yeah, I, we'll get you, we'll get you that.
Okay. Sorry, I'll keep going, yeah. Talk about, big thing, we get emails about this all the time. I mean, is looking to throw more resources at it. Could we do options two and three? I mean, like, we're talking about option two, there's the question of who's administering, administering the program or mediating the program, I believe is what was said. Could the third, the part-time employee that we hire on fulfill that role, kind of? It was on the con list, was, I believe, was mediation of like issues or anything?
It's page 95.
I'm not sure if I, you're saying run both, or run two different options at the same time?
Yes, I'm, like, kind of the, the concept of like putting more resources to it. So could we pick up a part-time person and contract some of the work out?
Yeah, I, um, you know, I don't want to influence you, this is your guys' decision, but to me, I think that would be hard to say at the end of the season, what was effective, what wasn't. I would much rather try one option and then do an evaluation. You certainly, and I'm not suggesting there would be competition between the two groups, but you know, you certainly don't want to make the employee look bad, the part-time employee look bad, or the, or the group look bad. If, if, you know, the numbers aren't, it would be tough. It would, I think there would be a lot of oversight issue.
Well, and that's in the work session, I appreciate that kind of feedback. I mean, I think that's what we're here for, so.
How many different neighborhoods would you say that would need to be targeted?
The entire city.
A lot more than you realize.
Yeah.
The entire city would have to be targeted. Feral cats will go anywhere.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah.
I mean, considering we see deer that come out of here, go all the way to the other side of the city. So, I mean, a deer travels that far.
There are critters among us.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Akay?
Yeah, this is interesting. I think if I, I seem to recall us talking about the possibility of collaborating with some society, humane society or some group here. Did we, did you look at that?
You're talking cats? I would say that their focus is predominantly.
Dogs.
On dogs.
Okay.
I would also say that I don't know how many, how much resources they have available to them.
Yeah, I, I, I think this, this is, this is a conundrum in a way, because you are absolutely right. You know, for me, it's, it's really a question of accountability. Who then, you know, oversees or provides oversight for option two and even possibly option three? In option three, I was thinking about the possibility of maybe doing a paid internship for students at CMU who might be interested, you know, in, in, you know, working with you on this. In which case, even if, you know, as the students come in, they can shadow one another and as, you know, a student might come in and stay with you for four years or so. And, you know, and then, you know, before they leave, somebody else comes in and shadows them, you know, and then stays. But you'd have this relationship with the university. And if that's not, not going to work, then I would go for, I would think maybe, you know, at this point, you know, option, the first option, which is where you're saying, yes, you do it in-house. It seems to me that that one has more integrity, there is certainty that, you know, you would have better oversight. But you are also correct in terms of, you know, losing the time that whoever is responsible for that would spend doing other responsibilities.
Yeah, let me first respond to the intern part of it. I, I can tell you that the city does not take this program lightly. And we do it right. We do it with a tremendous amount of care for the animals. And I just don't know if I'd want to put that on an intern.
Even a trained intern, one that you actually train, care, you know, provide the training and all that, and who is committed to, you know, vet medicine or?
And I don't know how, how accessible somebody like that is. I mean, I'm fairly confident that we would have a pool of people to pick from if we were to go the part-time route. So I, I'm not necessarily concerned about that.
Okay.
But to saddle it with an intern, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable. If you want to see people get really upset, let one, let one cat be harmed unintentionally. That ain't good.
What is considered the minimum hours for part-time, minimum and maximum?
Thirty-two, I think.
Well, it depends, each organization has different.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have to be under 32 as far as minimum goes. Not certain, you know, other than just a handful of hours, let's just say, would be the minimum. So call it no minimum with a maximum of 32.
Have you projected the cost of having it in-house and the cost of using these two other options?
Well, the cost to do it in-house i- is already built into the budget. Because they're not, they wouldn't get, say, overtime or anything like that. It's, it's during the course of their, their normal duty. As far as, as far as option two, we would have to put out an RFP saying, this is what we want, these are our expectations. And then they would come back and obviously place a bid on it, whoever. And then the third one, based on how many hours you would expect. And you gotta kind of strike while the iron's hot, because you're, you know, you want to be as effective as you can between, you know, May and and September or October, whatever it is, so. You know, if you say, we think it should be 32 hours a week, obviously, we will look into that, give you some cost projections and have further discussion on it.
Okay.
So that would be, it would be more of a seasonal employee?
Correct, because.
Because it would only be during the time of the warm weather for the, the animals.
Correct, right.
Would it be possible to identify, like, local veterinarians and set up a program where if a, if someone can prove their residency in Mount Pleasant, we could, we could pay for the neuter, as a spay and neuter of that animal? If someone can prove that this is like their residence of Mount Pleasant, and we're gonna tip the ear and everything, so it's not gonna be your finest house cat or anything that's getting brought in or something. But these are, I mean, people have feral cat colonies that are quite friendly to people also, because they take care of them, the cats are familiar with them. I mean, kind of like looking for what do we need to do to make a dent in this? Like, I feel like we're kind of narrowing in in our options here, like, if this is a priority, if we, we get so many emails about this all the time.
And, and don't let me, don't, don't let me narrow you in on options. If there's other options that you guys have that I didn't, those were the three options that I came up with. And, and so if you have other options, certainly I'm all ears and will look into it.
Thank you, Paul. I just wanted to come back to also saying thank you for your work.
The, 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 as far as like a resident bringing in a cat, that's something that we can look at. I will say that I have heard some kind of horror stories with, I would say, improper, yeah, this is a feral cat. You know, spay, neuter it, and then it does become the house cat or, or something. Is that a bad thing? I, I don't know. I, I.
Gets the cat off the street.
It does, you know, so.
Manager.
If I can, one of the issues with that, though, is I worked very closely with Inham County when I was in the area, and they wouldn't do that because very often you would have people come in and say, oh, I have this stray cat. And then they would come back the next day and say, oh, I was thinking about adopting that stray. It wasn't a stray cat. I mean, they can tell, like, it's, it's very well kept, it's very, this is not a cat that came off in the street. And so that's part of the issue that they would have, is people would bring in these cats that are wink, wink stray cats. They would take care of the cats.
To that point, why did we, why did we see a huge spike in 2021? I guess my question.
Because of COVID in 2021.
So people adopted cats in 2021, so people, and then what happened to those cats?
They just let them out.
Go.
Their week, so the cats that were the house cat that didn't get spayed and neutered got released. And, well, I guess, I guess that's kind of the information that was presented there.
And I would hesitate to blame it solely on, on COVID. I, I think the spike, definitely, but we had had a cat issue.
They're invasive.
No, no.
The problem is, is that we are a university and a college.
You got it.
And when the students no longer live in the dorms, and they live in an apartment or a house that they rent, and they're allowed to have a pet. They want to have a cat, or usually a cat is the easiest one to obtain. And then they are, they graduate and they get ready to go home, and they can't have the animal anymore. And some of them will say, well, it's a cat, this is a reasonable place, the neighborhood will pay, you know, will feed it, and they just let the cat go. Some of them will take it to the Humane Society, some will rehome it, but a lot of them ended up like that, unfortunately. And it's not for fault of the animal itself, it's. that, unfortunately. And it's not for fault of the animal itself, it's just there was not any future thought of what happens when we get, that's why they go through, like, when they go to the animal shelter, there's, they're like, oh, it's just, they go, they have you ask so many, they ask you so many questions, they make you pay so much money. Yes, because it's a responsibility. You know, it is a creature that stays with you until you no longer have them, hopefully because they have passed away of of natural causes.
So if it's a question of people releasing or having a cat, intending to take care of it, and then not being able
Gets too much, or their landlord discovers that they have a cat when they weren't supposed to, or
So I would put it back to the commission. I mean, if we just put out a, like, we're tired of feral cat problem, don't care where the cats come from, bring in the cat and get it fixed and neutered.
Well, there are organizations that do that, like Dallas to the Rescue.
Well, I mean, if it's a priority of the city, though, if it's a priority of the city, though, as far as getting them fixed and neutered, I mean, even if it's John and Jane Doe college students who, like, oh, I'm gonna take care of this cat for the next three, ten years, however long this cat's going to live. Oh, I'm moving out next semester, I'm just gonna leave the cat behind.
Yeah.
If we can get that cat fixed, then that's one less cat that's being put out there. But it's not just, again, it's not just those cats that are being adopted at home, it's also the cats that, you know, I'm in, I'm like right next to the woods in town and everything, and there's a feral cat colony that either lives under my porch or is like a few trees down and everything. They're friendly with me, I know I can pick it up and everything, I know I can take that cat into into the town. I don't need to worry about code enforcement coming down here to do this. I can do it myself. I don't have to contact an organization or anything. I can just go do it. I mean, then
Some kind, there are some individuals in the city that have offered and have taken in individuals' cats and had them neutered, paid for them themselves. It is costly.
And so if we could cover that cost.
Yeah, especially when you do vaccinations and, you know, you chip the animal. I know that's per pound or per ounce or whatever of the anesthetics, what they, is how they charge you for that service. But it's, it's also having the transportation to get there. It's the, you know, paying for the animal to have all that, being able to bring the animal home, being able to care for the animal during that time. There's a lot of things involved that some people just don't realize.
Yeah.
When you, when you pick up a animal, it's not, it's not just a thing that you have as a, you know, something that you, oh, look, I've got this cat kind of thing. It's a responsibility. And though people think that they're ready for the responsibility, sometimes they're not, unfortunately. That's why we have such a large feral cat community in Mount Pleasant. We probably have, probably for every five, ten people, we have one cat out there. And we have twenty-one thousand people in the city. So we have a lot of animals running around out there. What we need to, I like the trap, neuter, and release program because we know what we're doing, we have been trained. They go through a lot of work to take care of these animals, to care for them, to make sure that we're getting them the best care possible. And we do, we are able to adopt them out, we are able to place them in homes many times, which is something that I would like to see happen. Even if we can't place them and they end up back in the community, they're a feral cat, they live actually a better life. Because they're not, the female's not getting pregnant all the time, they are now vaccinated against some of the diseases that they spread to other animals, not just the other community cats, but to individuals, animals in the city that are owned. And I'd prefer that we move forward with this program, but I would like to say that I support having a part-timer do the five months, do a seasonal part-timer work worker, where we pay them, you know, a reasonable wage, we give them the thirty-two hours or less or whatever. You know, you guys would have to determine how much time would they actually spend every week, and would that, would that be up to thirty-two hours? Would it be less, whatever? But I think that, considering we're gonna train them in the TNR process, what you said is forty hours, forty-hour training, we're going to give them the resources that they need. We're, you know, we already have, I'm sure you guys get many calls saying, hey, so my neighbor has population underneath their porch, or, you know, I just saw mama with five cat, five kittens, and last week they they had six or whatever, you know. But we can send this person out, they'll be dedicated to do just this. And we always, we should always be pushing the the fact that there are organizations out there that will help with these, with spaying and neutering and vaccinating your cats, your dogs. Because it's so important, we can't expect these creatures to care for themselves when we have domesticated them thousands of years ago. And now we're thinking, well, it's just, it's just a cat out there, it's just a dog out there, it's whatever. No, we we domesticated them, it's no different than the deer that wander around in our city. They're pretty domesticated at this point, you know, and they're going to walk up to your house and they're gonna walk down the street. The other day, I pulled into my office and one of the deers was standing up here by the park system looking both ways before it trotted across. I mean, they're very responsive to the fact that we're here. Yeah, it used the crosswalk, yeah. They are, because you can train them, right? But we just need to, this is a problem that is the city's, this is not an unusual problem for a city, but it's a problem that we can, we can tackle if we put our, you know, our minds to it. And we educate the residents on how they can take care of their animals. It is.
I'd be interested to know the cost per cat, if we can get those numbers.
We'll get them to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, after my soapbox, does anybody else have any other questions?
I hope not.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. We are adjourned at eight fifty-six.